With the August Council meeting, Senator San will join us in the pleasure of being here, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Senator. And providing us with a prayer this morning is, I think, an individual who probably doesn't read any English.
No, it doesn't.
It's chaplain and so.
Let's pray. Gracious Father, thank you for this day that you've given us, a day that we can get something done. I just pray, Father, as this council, this commission, this group of people, individuals, come together, the Lord, you will help them to speak with wisdom today, that they will make decisions based on their good faith. I pray that you will guide them, direct them, give them strength today, and may we all leave this place saying it is good to be together. Praise them.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome, sir.
Okay, as we get started, we have in front of you the consent agenda. Anything from the consent agenda that anyone would like to have, before further discussion?
I'd like to talk about the two health departments.
The bottom two health. Any others? Okay.
Would you approve the consent agenda?
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve consent agenda. We put the discussion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. Just for the record, all seven council members are present.
Who was the second agent?
Paul. Yeah, thank you. Josh, move motion. Okay, and for the two that were pulled, the health department, back to back there.
This is basically some things we're looking at our 1159, which, you know, is our main health fund. This is the one that comes mostly from tax levies and things like, you know, real taxes, things like that. So what we're asking for is, as you know, we've not had a registered nurse here in the health department since Joyce Yoder passed away. We have only had one applicant. We have interviewed her. What we have here at the top is the current hourly rate for our ends in the U.S. is about $37 an hour. Indiana is about 32. Currently, what we're offering is $23 an hour. So this is likely part of the reason we've not had any applicants. There's an extreme nursing shortage in the country, in the state, et cetera. So what I'm asking for is to increase that rate to $30 an hour, which would be a yearly salary of about $56,160. And I believe it can be justified if you look at, and that doesn't include the perf and social security, but if you look at how much we have in the fund, we could see Health Department Fund, 1159, like I said, we have other funds, but this is the largest one. And also, just a reminder, this is not, you know, the general fund. This is the Health Department Fund. This money cannot revert back. This money stays with us. It has to stay in that fund. The state dictates that. So the fund balance forward, like I said, was 441,000. And you can see the balance there is 546,000. The estimated fund balance at the end of this year will be 602,000. Now, obviously, a big part of that is because we have not paid salaries. So we haven't had, you know, vital records. We haven't had a nurse. So that's part of where that excess comes. Some of that excess is also from COVID reimbursement we received for giving shots. We received about $80,000 in reimbursement from the state. So obviously, that won't happen again. But that was going directly to the Health Department. That also cannot revert back. It had to go into that fund. And I have a letter from the state that also says that these monies should not be used to affect our levies in the future, because these will not come again. And the state has asked that, with the state board of accounts, that because we receive these excess funds, they are supposed to be used for public health. And then I think this is also justified because even if we increase this salary by this amount, that's about $11,681 a year, again, not including perf and social security. But again, if you look at what our excess is, it would take, you know, 25 years to use that up. So if you look at that and you say, you know, we don't have a functional health department right now without a public health nurse. We have to find a way to get a nurse in this department. I mean, we have environmental now, you know, we have food. We don't have a public health nurse. We're not getting vaccines. That's all going to family health center. They're being a little bit overwhelmed with vaccines right now because we're not doing them. As far as lead cases, lead follow-up, TV follow-up, animal bites, you know, a lot of that is just not getting done. Some other things that you'll also see, and if you have questions, Kevin Fessler is here about environmental health. We're also asking for a transfer of an additional $40,000 to do environmental cleanup. And again, you know, that money is there and we're not, we're not spending it. I mean, part of the reason we aren't spending it is because we don't have the employees to spend it, to do the things that need to be done. But that is planned for, $30,000 is planned for environmental cleanup. $10,000 is planned for tires, to get rid of abandoned tires on property, because those are very difficult for people here.
How much was a tire in the end?
$10,000 rate. And we've actually found someone that they will get rid of them for how much? $4 a tire?
Well, it's a variable rate. If the tire is clean, the value of the rate is $4. Yep.
So we actually just came out to, the salary was later on in the thing.
Yeah.
I just pulled the environmental health for the 25 and the 15,000. The salary thing is later on.
Oh, sorry about that.
So the environmental health was the thing that I wanted to pull and understand exactly what it is and costs and...
Okay. Kevin, you want to speak to that, or do you have questions about that?
I'd like to.
Yeah.
You can do this thing.
He's a good boy.
Okay. What, what do I know?
Okay, so for the 25,000 is for what and how and when and...
So we have, right now, two properties in the county that are particularly needing cleaned up. One of them is in Rockfield and one of them is on Hodges Road by Monticello. Both of those have had repeated demands to get cleaned up. One, the individual in Rockfield, we actually paid to have him cleaned up in October of last year, and it is a mess again. So we have sent him another demand to clean it up. And this time, if we do in fact end up cleaning it up, it will be, the charge will be placed against, as a lien against his property and be billed as part of his taxes in the next tax season. So, but it will get it cleaned up. He's got dish tanks outside, standing water in them. He's got an abandoned vehicle sitting there, and he's got a variety of other pieces of trash just sitting around. Weeds are up to my shoulders in this front yard.
When you estimate the cost of his...
I estimate the cost of that between $8,000 and $12,000.
What was it paid out of last year?
The environmental fund, I assume. I don't really know. I wasn't here last year, so I don't know what was paid out of last year. The other property up on Hodges Road is up for tax sale this year. It has six abandoned cars on it, three abandoned boats, 40 yards of rubbish piled in the front yard, another 20 in the backyard, and it has probably between 20 and 25 tires as well. And the building structure itself, I think, probably is on the edge of needing to be removed as well. I'm not sure how sound it is, but I haven't been inside it. But the front porch is falling apart. There is no back porch. So the site is a mess. And that's the other one. I estimate the charge on that would be somewhere around $15,000 to get it cleaned up. Anyway, that's, and that's based on my own personal experience in doing demolitions of Saginaw Flank where we would clean up a building. It would cost anywhere from 15, anywhere from $8,000 to $20,000 to actually clear a site, a standard lot in your city. Saginaw costs anywhere from that, depending on the status of the building and how much you junk clean. But anyway, that's, that's just based on my own personal experience and how much these kinds of things cost. And then the $10,000, the additional part of that was to do a countywide cleanup of tires. And that was, that is the plan there is that we will have a truck dropped off at Fairgrounds of Flora. And for four, four weeks, four sand days in October, I will have a couple of people out there to collect tires from residents, although we're not going to take commercial stuff. But we'll take up the 20 tires per person and the, and the expense, actually, there's another charge that shows how that works with. The expenses then will be shared. The county will pay half the cost of disposal and the resident will be, will pay half of the cost for disposal. So if you bring 20 tires in, you're going to get charged $2, and then the county will have to pay $2 as well.
Do they charge us for having over there?
It's, it's the way that I understand it. I can have it dropped during the week when it's full. I call and they come pick it up, and they'll drop another one at the same time. So for, for a month, then we're going to have a, a truck sitting there to take tires, and I'll just call and have them come pick it up when it's full. And if we get a hold of well members, they'll drop two. So we can, so the thing is, many people have tires bigger than... I have spoken to a couple of members in the Comish community, or the Brotheran community, and they are interested in this as well. The individual I talked to personally has 50 tires. He'd like to get rid of them. So I think we've got support with that community term using.
Do you, do you don't worry that, I, my first thought is, you know, the first, first Saturday, second Saturday, it would be busy, and then like the third, fourth, and taper off, but you, you don't think it'll get less than?
Well, it's completely open. If, if I get overwhelmed the first Saturday, we'll go until I can't fill the trailer anymore, and we'll do it the second Saturday. And if the second Saturday, we're, we don't fill up, I probably won't do it the third or fourth Saturday.
Okay.
It's, I don't have a commitment here. I have, I have a single truck commitment every time for whatever I ask for.
Really? Is there any way to recoup? Sometimes they grind up the tires and use them for playground mulch and that.
Well, that's, that's what they do from here on.
Okay. And there's no, there's no recouping any of that, this cost?
Well, I'm charging each person who drops off half.
Right.
We're, we are paying for and getting to, back from each individual who drops things off. So we are recouping half of the cost.
Who will be sitting there?
Well, I'm going to be one of them sitting there watching, and I'm going to have to hire someone to, to be with me. So, and that's part of the budget for...
I'm not sure you can just hire someone to work. I don't believe so. I mean, you, you don't have anywhere to pay that.
Well, I've got it budgeted in the budget papers.
Not as a salary.
Well, I could hire the company to come back and come in. I could hire a moving storage guy.
When you say you have it in the budget, you mean this year or you're putting it in for next year?
I have a $40,000 budget for what I'm asking for. $10,000 of that is allocated to this tire project, and of the $10,000, I've allocated $2,000 to hire labor for that.
You just have to, you just have to advertise for some, I mean, there's rules and regulations on how to get, and they, you know, and all this other.
Sorry, we have to volunteer, is what you're saying.
That would be one way to get around it. Great. We'll move on then. Let's just move on to these other things.
Yeah, I, I can hire a volunteer. I'm actually sure. I've had, I've got two standing offers, so I'll find somebody. One of the people from Hodges Road's complaints has said that they'll volunteer for anything to help us clean up. He said, anything, and I will provide equipment to help move stuff in here. So I, I just know, you may have a couple of standing offers.
So the money that comes in from the tax auction, the one property that's sold, the tax auction, wouldn't that be a way to recoup some of this money or...
Well, this is figuring out.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think those are, a lot of them don't sell at all.
Okay.
Because any liens that we have placed against them are more than the value of the property.
Okay.
So they just don't sell. That's been my...
You'll save a dollar in that consideration.
I, I think it's a way that we're going to recover that money. It's just, the, the problem, the issue that's going on here, if we're going to be real frank about it, is I have, there is a neighbor there who said they're going to buy this property. This property is on my list for coming up as well. Okay? I think you can see where this is going. I, I don't want him to decide his guess and just move next door.
And that's, that's my concern. And he's already said, we cleaned up one last October. It's back to the same. But my concern is you can clean them up all day long. How do you pick and choose who you're going to clean up, and then one year later, they're back to the same? It's a waste of money. I mean, it's my fault.
What fees are we putting in?
We have to have a policy, and I believe we discussed this two years ago, about a policy and a plan of vehicles, trash, and, you know, what we can do to make people do this and take it upon themselves, you know, like you say, it's going to be put on their tax sale, but how does the county recoup that money? And the vehicles should be, I, I think that if they're not plated or that they should be hauled off for that, they're, but you have to have a plan and a policy to make this continuously work.
Well, I...
Because we can throw money out there all day long, you know, like you said, clean it up, and then six months later, it's back to the same thing.
I think that that's a valid concern, and I don't know exactly what to tell, tell the county about that, because it is true that some people are going to just let it go right back to where it was. I don't think there's any way that you can prevent that. But I also think that there's a group of people who, if they see that we are serious about putting a lien against our property with taxes, and we actually do it a couple times, that are going to be a lot more likely to say, hey, they're serious, we better clean it up. I can't tell you exactly how successful this is going to be. But I can tell you that the Health Department Fund has enough money in it right now to go ahead and try this and see how it works. I'm not, I'm not advertising that we do this again and again and again, but I do think that if we try it and see what happens and see how the response is when I tell people that we need to clean up works in the future, we will have some idea whether it's a good idea to continue or not. I'm not, I'm not proposing this over and over again. I'm proposing to do it this fall and then have enough money that I can do it a couple times again next year with other sites. But there will be other properties that come up. But again, I will reiterate that I don't know if this is going to work. I think the tire thing will work great, but I don't think the tire post, the tire part of this, I think the tire cleanup will work, but I don't know how this cleanup will be. But what I do know is that there's a certain number of people, when I send a cleanup order out, they blow it off because they know that nothing's going to happen. And I want to get people aware that, yeah, something's going to happen now.
What is your policy on, you tell them what?
The way it works is...
One notice, two notice, three notice, and then what? Is there anything...
Well, well, that's, this is the what, okay? The what is the, go ahead, the county comes in, cleans up your spot, sends you a bill, you have 30 days to pay it. And if it is not paid, then I turn it over to the auditor, and the auditor then puts a lien against the property and goes on the property tax bill. That's the process. And at this point, I have not done that. I have not sent anybody a bill personally enough because I don't have any money to go clean up. And then that's what my work stops.
I think what she must have known is, we have a policy or, would you tell the listeners there's a state statute that you're going by? So, I mean, the policies that you were doing to get to this point.
Because I'm concerned, you can't just walk on somebody's property and clean it up.
No. No, but we have an ordinance that, that says that I have the authority, and that's what you, part of what you hired me to do, was to enforce a public nuisance ordinance, which means that people have to keep their, their yards and their property clean, which means they don't have trash, piles of trash, they don't have dead cars, they don't have dead boats, they don't have all these things out there piled up, they don't have rats running around. We have an ordinance.
We have legal rights to...
How do you, how do you prioritize this? I mean, like, if we just went for a drive right now, we could probably find 100 homes that break period.
Well, probably more.
So, I mean, so how do we say, you know, person A is going to get this levying against them and person B is not?
That's a really good question, and I'm still struggling with coming up with a good answer right now. The answer that I'm going on is, have we had an issue in a task with an individual? And have we, you know, where are we at here with certain individuals? And if we've had that issue, you know, these are the ones I'm pushing first, that's why we've only got two. There are, in fact, about 10 people around here that, that I think could be on that list of pushing to get things cleaned up tonight.
You've had complaints about these?
Yeah.
So you're going by the complaints?
I'm going by the complaints, yeah, basically. I have had a lot of complaints. I've had six complaints about the one on Hodges Road, and those complaints date back two years. I've had eight complaints about the one in Rockfield, and that goes back two years. And so those, that's why these two are being pulled too, because I've actually had complaints about, if I don't get complaints about somebody, I don't really think that I should be going after them. You know, I might get a complaint and drive by and look, but if there's not anything obvious that needs to be picked up, I'm not going to push it. Because I, I, I have trouble myself saying what somebody should or should not do with their property and how they should keep it. But we do have this ordinance that says we should need to keep it mowed. We do have this, this, another part of that ordinance that says that there shouldn't be trash or, or dirt just laying around, such sort of things a home for, or attracts rats and mice and rodents and raccoons and all those things.
Is this a county ordinance?
Is Rockfield property cleaned up and got any expense?
The last time?
Yeah.
I believe so. I don't know for sure.
And now it's right back...
And it's right back where it was, yes. I, but the last time, we just...
Where, where did they have pulled that money from last time? Because I know our cleanup, we did create a cleanup fund, but I believe there was only $3,500 or $5,000 in it. So when I look at 25,000 and 15,000, and then you talk about doing it a couple times next year, we're into the $100,000 for cleanup.
We're into a total of $80,000. With the tension that most of that will be recovered through the payment on the tax limits when they actually have to pay their debt. If they don't pay the bill, then it's not...
I, I have a question. Are you going to give, you said something about for the tax sale, the bill would be defined for...
I don't think it's going to happen. I was getting to it.
I didn't think so either.
It's, it's getting too late this year. It'll still go, and even if I do it now, it'll still be on the taxes, and whoever owns the property will have to pay that tax and pay for it. It'll still be there. It's just it may not happen before the tax sale.
There's a timing issue there that if it's not, if it's not actually leaned by a certain timeframe, you're not going to get to that show. But you can, because then you are buying the house and you put this title work and it says, oh, owes the county 20. You're buying it knowing that. You're buying it knowing that, and you're buying it...
Well, so the way Hodges Road is going to work is if you guys say okay today, I don't think I can get it before the tax sale. The first thing I have is the way I have the tax sale, because then we'll have a new owner, and when I put it on, it will go unless you own it.
Well, that's true.
And they're also buying the track.
I would hope so.
They're buying the problem.
They'll clean it up.
They're buying the problem.
Which means they'll never sell.
That's, that's...
May not sell.
Well, again, again, I will...
The new owner will not be able to go on that property for a year.
Right.
It's going to sell.
So it's going to be sitting.
It's going to sit for a year just like it is, and I don't know what part we haven't had at least one car, and that's been six months. And who knows who belongs to that.
Why are the cars not being hauled off if they're not plated and that isn't that up to...
This is my problem, like, like, I mean, like...
I know, but we...
We're down here and there's a house with 10 cars in the front yard and they mow it. And you have another one with weeds 10 feet high and one car. Like, how are we, like, it, I mean, the policy is meaningful to me, how, how this, if we're, if we choose to fund it, the policy seems very material to this. And, and just saying we're, that we're going to have a squeaky wheel is the one that we're going to pursue is also a policy that is just kind of concerning from my perspective because if, if that, that just means that we're going to get cranky neighbors calling on each other and then, and then...
We dealt with this four years ago, and that's what...
Yeah, and I, you know, I really want to have a good discussion about this because this concerns me greatly.
Yeah.
It really does. I don't, I have this ordinance that you've hired me to enforce. And this, you know, and in, in all fairness, like you said, there's a hundred places in Carroll County that could probably be for this. I think that it's pushing things a little bit to be that aggressive. But I, I don't, I don't want, and again, the other side of that is the same. If I just address squeaky wheels, then it looks like I'm, you know, targeting people, and that's not going along either. It would be great if we talked about this enough to come to a consensus about how this ordinance should be enforced.
One thing, I was going to say, one thing I would add, Kevin, that we talked about, that state also gives us guidelines on is, is this property a health risk? So tires, number one, are because they're mosquito breeding grounds. So, and that causes the spread of West Nile. So someone with, say, the 900 tires on their property, we can offer them different remediation. You can cover them, you can drill holes in them, you can fill them with dirt, but if they are not, if they are still able to be filled with water, they become a health risk and the state asks us to go after those. So that's one reason we focus on the tire project. But, but like I said, they don't have to. They can cover them with tarp, they can fill them with dirt. Otherwise, we're stuck. What we're supposed to do is treat that pile of tires with mosquito spray, mosquito pellets. And then what happens though is we have to keep going back and doing it, you know, if they don't cover them. And so, and the same thing with, like, the fish tanks. We could just tell them, you need to flip those over because they're full of water. We can see that from pictures, it was mosquito breeding ground. So one way we would prioritize some of these is, is it an actual health risk? If we could see evidence of rats, that's considered a health risk. Some of these trash piles do not have evidence of rats. But if we do, then that's considered a health risk. So the state says that's one way we prioritize these. So you have already sent your letters out and talked to these people?
Right.
And I just want you to know, I don't, I go past the Rockfield every day telling the word, and you need to go back to check, because they, I mean, they are trying, they're cleaning it up a little bit more than what I told you, Kevin, to check.
And Gabe went back and told Lena.
Right. But what I'm saying is sometimes when you go out and talk and you get a letter, oh, if I got a letter, I'd be out there cleaning, you know, or whatever, but...
Well, like I said, most of the time, that's what happens. Most of the time, if I show up on your board and say, hey... Most of the time, if I show up on your board and say, hey, you got, you're dumping sewage on the ground, you can't do that anymore. That's all it takes, most of the time. But I, there's a couple of spots here and there, you know, that, that doesn't happen.
So my next question is if we're on a time thing and budgets are coming around, I'm sure you're going to put it in your budget for this for your next year. If we're gonna run out of time, then probably this isn't going to be a necessary fund for this year because of the timing, is that what you're gonna say, Eric?
All I'm saying is there's a filing deadline. If you don't get it, and I'm going from memory here, I, I think if you don't have it in as a lien, at least thirty days before sheriff's sale, you don't get in on that sheriff's sale.
So the tire, um, situation, that can be set up and done in October, but the, the cleanup money and that, the cleanups for those lands couldn't be?
Well, so she brought, she brought up the tire issue. The tire issue is something we have, I haven't even mentioned to this group yet. The tire issue was something that got started getting cleaned up in July, and I did send an order to those people. I have checked up to them and they are actually remaining, I've got a receipt coming in, uh, two weeks ago, that said that they had two hundred and twenty-five, that they eight hundred removed and paid for that removal.
That's crazy.
Yeah, you know, but they've got eight hundred tires sitting there, and I had a report that they were burning them. I followed up with them about that report and immediately got a response that they're actually not burning. So, but anyway, that's a completely separate issue from the two that I was talking about. With that one, I'm actually getting some move on.
My question is, is this. Yeah, forty thousand dollars, are you going to use that this year?
Yes. That's what I'm asking for.
I personally, if they ever go and enter with their tires, table a property thing, I think it's property thing. I couldn't agree more with Josh. I don't take two out of fifty. I can table that.
Dan, I'm not sure.
Um, my question is, and I haven't seen the county ordinance, is there any way to cite those people in court and maybe avoid putting tax lien on them? Most of your cities and towns have teeth and there are ordinance like that where they can be cited in the court if they're in violation. But there, again, I don't have the ordinance, so it's a question for me.
Right, and, and I, I definitely concur. I think that there's things that we need to discuss and hand around before we begin to address this. Doc, you said something, and I think Tracy, you said something about the tire, uh, situation. Can we have a motion?
I'm moving. Go ahead.
Don't have a question.
Just a comment, but go ahead, I can make that happen.
We're right ahead.
Um, as I recall from the county nuisance ordinance, uh, when our agency was involved with it in the past, our protocol was that we would go out and make contact with that property owner. Particularly, obviously, our main focus was vehicles on properties. And, um, we would issue, uh, notice, generally a letter, to that property owner allowing them thirty days per the ordinance to abate, uh, that situation involving vehicles. And then we would follow up after that thirty days and determine whether or not, uh, that property was, was cleaned up by way of their vehicles. If they had not, uh, then our deputies would then file, uh, their reports with the county attorney for further action by way of the courts. The county attorney, the way I've always understood it, is the, if you will, the prosecutor when it comes to the county ordinances. And so, it would be followed up that way. We also have in the past cited, uh, it hasn't already been brought up, we have cited individuals, uh, provided them with court dates, again, with, with past court dates. I do recall one down in Cutler, probably fifteen, twenty years ago, when the ordinance first came on board. And it was a huge, uh, fight, if you will. Um, and involved a lot of county tax dollars back then, as I remember, and, and I'm not. I think that property, as I recall, was partially cleaned up, but I don't think it was fully cleaned up. And, um, it kinda got lost in the shuffle and, uh, nothing came of it. Uh, I haven't seen that property in a while, so I don't know what its current status is, so. But that's just a little bit of history as far as our agency's involved with the past with county nuisance ordinance.
So there is.
Yes.
So we're making him come to the court date that there is just, oh, I'm gonna, cause you gotta give them a sign and they're probably, some of them may not even realize it's on their taxes, although they have a lien. I mean, would you have to appear in front of which I didn't afford, I think that's scary.
Yeah.
So I have a question about the tire thing. Uh, so, I mean, what we're saying here is we're gonna spend ten thousand dollars subsidizing the people that want to use this service. Um, they're still paying, so, well, how did we come to the number fifty percent when, like, so, I mean, if we just offer the service and said it's four dollars a tire? And come, comes, and then you're, they're just paying that four dollars a tire as for the service? Like, how do we think, why do we think that it's better if we, if we pay half of the, of the four dollars?
Because there's people around who can't afford to have the tires to move. And if I reduce the fee for that a little bit, it'll be more people to come.
I mean, that's the question in my mind, like, is this two dollars a tire really make a difference? In terms of them doing, uh, uh, remediation versus burning them or roving in the ditch? Like, if you can't afford four dollars, can you afford two dollars?
I think, I think two dollars is, they're paying Barnum and, they teach. Better participation, you haven't really had that much money. Otherwise, what if tires everywhere?
This might be a silly question, but Dick and Carol's family used to take tires with the transfer station.
We still do.
They still do.
We take tires that, like, if a farmer finds tires left on his property, he can take them to the transfer station and she'll take them for free, and if not, it's four dollars a tire, right?
Yeah. She'll take four, she'll take four tires.
What's that?
She'll take four tires from anybody who brings, but that's, she'll take anybody's four.
And it's four dollars a tire?
I was just out there a couple of months ago, tried to get rid of tires, and they said they had no room for them, that they were having a couple of people come pick them up, so they wouldn't even be taking them in the transfer station.
They got a semi-traveller, but.
And they said it was old, it wouldn't take anymore. I had to take them back out with me. They wouldn't even accept it.
I, I took, I took tires there this week and.
Well, I bet you did, it's been a couple of months, but.
And, and they were dumped on my property, and I explained that, and they, and they took them. I don't know if that's standard practice, but they, they said if they're dumped on your property, it's, you know, it's different than if they're your tires. The other thing is they take them out here at the old brown tire, you know, whatever that's called nowadays, for four dollars a tire. I mean, so, so what's the difference whether you go there or you go to her for four dollars? It's the same, I mean.
Well, it should be four dollars for every tire, even whether they're dumped or not, because you, everybody will be going out there and saying, well, these were dumped on my property.
Yeah, so, I guess my point is, we really do have this service. People choose not to utilize it, so I'm not so sure they're gonna utilize it just because they're sad.
But I was told the other day, I think it was last week, beginning of the week, that, from somebody that came in and said that she's not taking the tires.
So do you think the person that has eight hundred tires is gonna load or whatever?
I know they're not.
They're not gonna dump them up and utilize it?
They're not gonna utilize it, but they're on a different track. They, they are on a different track from the rest of the Carroll County because they have eight hundred tires.
Refresh my memory, what was the money amount for the tire for the month of October, four Saturdays?
It was ten thousand dollars total.
Ten thousand dollars.
But you may not use all that if you, if you don't.
Well, I tend to use all of them.
If, if they'll bring them.
If they bring them, I'll use them all.
I get it, but.
So what's the ten thousand dollars for, just for them to subsidize the trailer?
It subsidizes the price. It subsidizes the price of tires. Okay, so, I, I don't wanna get argumentative with you guys here, but I wanna ask you a question that I want you to think about. The Health Department has five hundred and forty thousand dollars in its account. What are we using this money for? Where is the money supposed to go to and how is it going to be spent? Four hundred thousand dollars of that money is carried forward from last year. Where and how do we want to spend this money? Because the money is supposed to be used for the community, to help the community in its health issues and its health hazards. That's what this money is supposed to be used for. The county cannot use it for anything except health-related issues. Everything that I presented you today is a health-related issue. It will improve the way the county looks and improve the overall health of the county. These are all funds that you can't spend anywhere else. And I just, you need to think about that when you're saying yes or no, because I'm not asking to spend all of it. I'm asking to spend about ten percent of what we have, even if you add it all up. What, what, and if we're not gonna spend it this way, and I'm fine with that, where should we be directing this money? What health issues should we be looking at for the company, county to try to, to spend this money? Cause as stewards of this money, we have the obligation to put it where it's needed and use it, because that's why we call it. And that's all I have to say.
I'll make a motion to spend the ten thousand dollars for the tire pickup, we give, to give that a try and see how it goes.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion for a floor with a second for ten thousand dollars, um, for tire pickup. And where will that be located?
Uh, it'll be, the, I haven't got final permission yet, but the tentative spot is the floor of our repair ground, county fairground, not by a tractor, but. They said there weren't gonna be any problems with the council, they haven't officially said this yet.
Does the motion specify what line we're transferring from?
Well, the total amount was being told from lines.
Vital record.
Okay, thank you.
That says fifteen thousand.
So the amount, we're going to just one transfer of ten thousand dollars from vital record.
Further mention?
Yes. Any further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven, zero.
Well, I mean, my, my only request would be, like, I consider this to be an experiment, and I think you alluded to that. We need to see what outcomes come from.
The worries.
Yeah, and so, but, but that's what we usually don't get, is, like, we get requests for a lot of funds and then we don't see outcomes, and it's really hard to look at future allocations, so if you can help us.
I'd be happy to.
Look at the data that you want to come out.
The other thing is getting the word out there, I don't know how you plan on letting the community know that it, this has worked out, what's gonna happen, newspaper, Facebook, I mean, that is another big issue, because if people don't know it's there.
It's just commercial, commuter tires, right? No industrial?
Well, I think in some of the parts. Again, it's not, it's not just for large commercial, there's a window of twenty per person, and it's gotta be a household of Carroll County. That's closed with parameters under the law. Again, my view about this is, I'm gonna spend ten thousand dollars. If somebody decides to dump forty tires, forty tires to go on the truck, we're gonna pay for them. That's gonna be a chunk of the budget and, you know, that's what's gonna happen if somebody decides to take advantage.
Yes.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Can that motion be amended to go with the, um, last transfer from fifteen to ten? You need to say, and, whatever, allow it.
I'm not sure I understand.
Well, I mean, I'm just saying that it's that line, but then we need to do something with that other line, the other transfer.
The public counters.
Yes. And also, are we going to pay the two dollars? I, I mean.
Yeah, that's included in the assumption, that we're gonna pay the two dollars and they're gonna pay you.
So you need, you need a motion for the twenty-five thousand dollar line to be.
Yes.
Not allowed.
We've, we've already approved a ten, so you can just kill both of these. But we, we, we did, we approved a ten health dollar transfer from vital records, so.
So I make a motion that we cancel the, deny. Yeah, deny the two Health Departments.
Second.
On the second.
He dealt with one. You're only denying the, oh, four to.
No, she's denying, no, they're denying the fifteen.
Well, they modified to fifteen to ten.
I'm not, I'm not agreeing.
No, he made a new motion.
Well, did you?
A transfer has already been approved.
That's already been approved, and then this one has not been worked on, so she just said. That's fine.
We got a motion and a second for denial of the second transfer. Any further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries seven, zero. All right, I think we're ready for.